Got it.
Got record? Call the meeting to order at 5:33. And we all stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, for roll call, Susan Seltzer.
Here.
Thomas O'Brien? Not yet. TJ now?
Here.
Good, thank you TJ. Matthew Buckley?
Here.
Michelle Kaiser?
Here.
Yuquan Lee?
Yeah.
Barbara McInerney?
Yeah.
And Aaron Nowak?
Here.
Thank you very much.
Okay, may have a motion that after review, the board approves the agenda as presented at this meeting. Motion please. Barbara, a second. Michelle? All in favor? I? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. We'll move into our Board of Education discussion. Sarah, would you like to lead off on the information?
Yep. I apologize.
Okay, take your time. Although it's my husband's birthday, he was like 6:30, no later than 6:30, I want dinner on time.
Alright. Okay, and then. Here. Okay. Alright. I think that's it now, now I go to here. Share screen. Share. You're seeing the Board of Education special meeting?
Yes.
Okay, good. Alright, so, um, I just wanted to talk with the board about two small items and then one slightly bigger item related to the 2021 school year, specifically what's happening right now in the region related to COVID and some of our protocols and initiatives. So, one of the things that we've been talking about with families and with teachers and with the GLTA as well, is about making sure that we are meeting the educational needs of students while also supporting teachers in the best way that we can and how to find a balance between those two. Quarantined students do need to continue to be educated through remote instruction, through streaming. And teachers need the time and support to be able to do that successfully. So, when a class closes and goes quarantining, this is, then the entire class goes home, the teacher goes home, that's a different situation where we can go into a quarantine below setting immediately the next day. However, when there's a surprise quarantine, for example, when a student is considered a contact for a case outside of the school zone, it's kind of a surprise quarantine, they just get a call tonight, let's say, saying my kid's a contact and can't come to school tomorrow, but that's the only kid and it was due to an outside contact, not at school. So, what we would like to do is have a 24 to 36 hour wait period before that student would start to stream in, to give the teachers time to plan, because to go from 100% in-person instruction to... Is the link not working again? Okay, um... When a teacher is planning in-person instruction, that's a completely different pedagogy, it is a totally different set of skills, preparation and everything. So, we need to give teachers the time to plan and allow for that to know that a kid is going to stream in and be able to get them the materials that they need. It also, we're going to try to give teachers an extra prep period on the day after the surprise quarantines, and then anyone that streams in... I can't right now, I can't. Can you still see the share screen?
Yes, we can see the share screen.
Okay, I cannot see it.
The next thing is that's, that's different than the whole class quarantine.
That's different than the whole class quarantine, yes. And so, we would want to support teachers and try to give them an extra prep period the day that they're notified of surprise quarantine, and then when they have dual, and they're teaching both in-person and remote students, to every extent possible, give them an extra prep period minimally once per week, to the extent possible. So, that's just a little bit about how we want to, like I said, continue the education of students and continue the support of teachers through this period when we're going to have students in and out quarantining, whether it's due to medical quarantine, precautionary quarantining, or travel quarantine. Are there any questions or anything from the board on that?
Um, have we, have we moved to this model yet? Has it happened, or is this what we're going to move towards now?
This is what, so, what we've been doing up until now is kind of taking things on a case-by-case basis, doing what's filed, the family, the educational situation, et cetera, but the time has come to kind of go out with a more formal plan as more students are quarantined. Both, mostly for out-of-school contacts and then also for travel. So, that's why this part is coming up more now.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions to this point? We're all good? Okay.
The second small thing that I wanted to talk to you about is our local health department, the state department put out a flowchart of decision-making, when a child can come to school or when a staff can come to school versus when they can't come to school and what they need in order to return to school. And one of the things at the end of every line is clearance by the local health department. I think local health department creates their own rules in terms of when a child can return to school. So, in Orange County, children need a doctor's note to return to school and staff members after exhibiting any symptoms of COVID, after travel to a non-contagious state, or after quarantine. And we certainly, one of the things that we've heard from parents is that they have a lot of concern about the cost of co-pays. Every time they go to the doctor, they have to pay a co-pay. So, we understand after a student exhibiting symptoms, you need to go to the doctor and get cleared to return to school. Absolutely, we don't want COVID-positive students or staff members in school, and we don't want them to spread it, so we want to want them cleared to the doctor diagnosing them with something other than COVID or getting a negative COVID test, there's a series of things in there. So, we understand that children need to go to the doctors then. If families choose to travel to a non-contagious state, we also understand our local department's department's choice of requiring a doctor's note there. But where I started to have a question is after the quarantine period. So, there's a 14-day rule where a person is presumed non-contagious after, if they are non-symptomatic for 14 days after exposure to a positive case. So, as such, I wrote to, I wrote an advocacy letter to our Dr. Gellman, our health commissioner, asking her to consider shifting the requirement for a doctor's note after quarantining. And I'm just going to, I'm going to read that this quickly to you so that everyone hears it. "I'm writing, Dr. Gellman, I'm writing to you today to share with you a little bit of our work from the trenches, so to speak, and ask that you consider revising a small section of your updated FAQ guidance document for schools in Orange County, specifically as concerning question 13 and when clearance is required from a doctor for return to in-person school setting. As a district, we have worked hard and continue to work diligently to follow all the federal, state, and local rules and guidelines. Our parents are keeping children home when sick. Schools are quarantining students based on the Orange County Department of Health decisions. When families travel, we share with them the requirements for return. Let me start by saying our district fully supports and understands the state and local requirement that a doctor's clearance is necessary in order to return to work or school after exhibiting symptoms of COVID. There's nothing more important than the health of our students and staff and working to limit the spread of this virus. Further, our district also understands and supports the Orange County Department of Health's requirement regarding a doctor's note to return to work or school after travel to a state on the travel advisory list. This is a family's choice and they know the requirements in advance. All of this being said, paying co-pays has quickly become an extremely hot topic among our parents and even within our district staff. One thing that we hear over and over from parents is how much the co-pays are starting to add up. People are struggling financially and it's overwhelming them. Clearly, it has a disparate impact on our families from a lower socionomic group, which is troubling, along with the disparate impact of the virus on different demographic populations. Further, we've also heard from doctors that are overwhelmed with the increased number of doctor's visits. What I'd like you to consider changing is the requirement for a doctor's note after quarantining due to close or proximate contact with a COVID-19 positive person, regardless of whether the quarantined person has been symptomatic or asymptomatic. When reading about COVID from the CDC, State Health Department, et cetera, it's very clear that a person is considered non-contagious after 14 days of no symptoms after contact with a positive case. Would you please consider adding an option for a school-based interview with the nurse after quarantine, prior to the return of school, where each school nurse would have to interview each and every student, family, employee, and ask them a series of questions similar to what a doctor might ask in a telehealth appointment? If the answers meet the requirements, the nurse would have the ability to clear the student to return to school. This would be a tremendous help to all involved. Less paperwork for the Department of Health and the district themselves. We provide copies of it, the evidence of the interviews. Families wouldn't have to pay co-pays that they cannot afford, and doctors' offices would not be quite so overwhelmed. If the questions were not answered exactly as needed, the school could then demand a visit to the doctor. I note that the New York State COVID-19 Guide does not have an analogous requirement of a doctor's note to be released from quarantine when asymptomatic. The state tool could indicate that the 14-day quarantine requirement must be met even if the individual receives a negative COVID test. The local health department clearance is required, but the additional requirement of a healthcare provider's clearance note is solely in existence as a result of the Orange County Department of Health guidance. As I know you and your staff are overwhelmed, I'd be willing to start a draft of what the interview sheet might look like, the questions we'd ask, and then send it to you revisions for revisions and edits. Thank you for all you're doing, I very much appreciate your willingness to consider this additional options for students and families, districts, families. Oops. The suggestion set forth above would still be an additional layer of checks and balances beyond that which exists at the state level, but may lay some of the burdens to the healthcare system and those in socio-economically challenged circumstances. Thank you for your consideration. So, I wrote that today. Julie, who is here with us as legal counsel, helped me with that letter and added some little bits in there to help me on the legal side of it. And so, Dr. Gellman has not responded yet officially to my letter. If she answers yes, we can do that, great, we can have our own system in place and additional checks and balances. If she answers no, however, and a doctor's note is still required, I'd like to consider some options for our families that say that the co-pays are becoming overwhelming. One option would be to use our district physician and reach out to him to see if we could contract with him to pay him to meet with our students virtually and conduct the interviews, and then he would clear them. If he's not willing or able or unable to do those, that we can, to consider contracting with another medical professional where the district would take on that, that financial responsibility. Like I said, if a child is symptomatic, I understand they need to go to the doctor. If you choose to travel, I understand the requirement to go to the doctor. But when our students or our staff are exposed at school simply for coming to school or to work, my personal belief is it's not fair of the Department of Health to require them to go to the doctor's office when that's not required at the state level. And again, they're presumed non-positive or non-contagious if they're symptom-free for 14 days. Julie, did you want to chime in anything on that?
Yes, thank you Sarah. So, I just wanted to add that legally at the state level, a person doesn't have to be tested when they're in a precautionary quarantine due to a close or proximate contact with a COVID-19 positive individual. It's always the conversation between their healthcare provider and themselves, and it's an individual's decision. And even if that test comes back negative, they're not allowed to return to work, even if there's no symptoms and a negative, until the end of the 14-day quarantine has been completely finished. So, here, the doctor's note requirement really serves no important purpose in protecting health and safety. It isn't a state-level requirement or even a recommendation, and it has a disparate burden on a portion of the population that is really an unfair thing to do during the time of a health pandemic. So, I agree with what Sarah proposed, I think it's a great idea, and it should take a burden off of a thing that shouldn't create an additional burden when there are already so many of them. But legally, nothing is required from a doctor under this circumstance at the state level, so why should we be imposing this local burden without sufficient and strong rationalization?
Any thoughts or reactions? Any thoughts or reactions from the board on that or this advocacy? Or, I did want to get this out to Dr. Gellman prior to meeting with you all tonight. I hope it's okay with you guys that I did that on behalf of our families and our staff members, but I didn't know kind of how you felt if her answer was no to that. And my proposed...
I think it was a good idea to try and advocate for our families. Absolutely, it's just, I know it's getting very hard to get a telehealth appointment, and it can actually, if you don't get it in time, your child's going to be out longer. But as far as contracting, why don't we go around with everybody and get some thoughts? I'm personally okay with it. Aaron, you're at the top of my screen, do you want to give your opinion?
I like the idea.
Okay, TJ?
I like the idea, but do we have any idea what something like that would cost?
No.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Okay.
Go ahead Julie.
Just so you know, thank you. Anything that you did later enter into as far as a contract would be based on whatever terms were negotiated between the district and the healthcare facility, and that would be presented to the board for adoption itself as a separate item at a later point in time if authorization was given to pursue the concept, and the best available rate would be negotiated, it would be a negotiation.
Because the only thing that I'm wondering, I don't even know if this is a possibility, if it ends up being an astronomical price to enter in the contract with one of them, is there a way we could possibly reimburse co-payments with a receipt of them actually being charged?
That could happen under certain parameters if written in an agreement.
I'm just wondering if that might be a cheaper option, you know, we'd save a couple of thousand dollars by just repaying people's co-pay to them.
Okay, um... Different point of view, but good.
We do know virtual telehealth, certain insurance companies offer free telehealth visits virtually to their own insurance holders, like MVP has a virtual telehealth, and there is no co-pay for MVP health insurance holders. That kind of thing should be looked into as well, so people do take advantage of those services when they have them available. And hopefully, the Orange Ulster Schools Health Insurance Consortium could also take that into consideration with some advocacy efforts.
Thanks Julie. Michelle?
I'm all for it, and I thank Sarah for taking the initiative and, you know, sending that out and advocating for our parents, so, and thank you Julie for all your input.
Alright. Matt?
I think it's a great idea, and yes, thank you Sarah and thank you Julie, like, you know, this sounds very professional to me.
Okay, thanks Matt. Yuquan?
I agree with Sarah. Nice letter Sarah, and thank you Julie.
Okay, and Barbara?
I'm a fan, I'm happy to hear. It's important that we advocate for our families. And just a quick question about the doctor, is there anything else? So, we would contract out, but is there anything else that we would be able to, with the exception of it just being for COVID-related, right, return to, returning to school? Is there anything else that we can actually use or would use the doctor's office for? Again, a fan, this is not a negative, just a question.
So, we do contract, but we have a school district physician already, we have Dr. Horowitz as our district physician. We actually met with him this summer as a part of our reopening plan, and he gave us advice on our plan, he read our plan, gave us feedback on different aspects of it. He weighed in on the mask situation for us, and we had a conversation about that. When we had requests for accommodations from staff, Julie and he and I had a meeting and we reviewed every single staff member's request together, and he gave us advice on what to do with those accommodations. Similarly, yes, when we've had students that have a specific medical need that the parents are unable to take care of, we send the child over to Dr. Horowitz and we pay him directly to meet with our students. So, the answer is yes, we use our Dr. Horowitz for a variety of reasons all the time.
So, to me, it's almost like it's already in effect, like it's just a natural progression, like yes, I love it, good, thank you.
And if we become a yellow zone, we're going to, if we decide to stay open, have to forge a relationship with an organization that can help us facilitate testing of 20% of the in-person students and staff every two weeks or in whatever other interval that might be designated by the Department of Health. And maybe when we search for a professional organization, we could find one that could also have a contract for that purpose for moving forward if we do get designated, because getting that testing into place really quickly could be difficult. So, if we could get ahead of that, and then the state provides the free rapid tests, but you're responsible for contracting to determine locally how to effectuate that requirement if desiring to stay open for in-person instruction, so, something to think about as well.
I really like that idea Julie of kind of tying in the testing, potential need for testing as well as the quarantine clearance, because you do need a doctor to issue the test, the test as well, so. And we'll also explore the idea of repaying co-pays, absolutely. But, good, and like I said, and I said this, and we've talked a lot about kids, but this would be for staff and employees as well that we would open this up to, if they were exposed at school. So.
Okay, everybody's in agreement, thanks Sarah.
Alright, so, the superintendents of Orange County have met with Dr. Gellman twice over the last couple of days, as well as today with the county executive was in on the call. And they described to us the extreme holiday, Halloween surge, what they call it. After Halloween with the various parties and social gatherings that did not involve social distancing, that there's been a huge increase in cases. And they expect the same with the upcoming holidays where people travel and have group gatherings. Positive cases continue to increase in our area. The sheer volume of cases means that there is going to be another surge after the holidays. In Dr. Gellman's words, "There is a substantial and steady increase currently that exceed the spring rates." And she said, "Expect a tidal wave." And it would be prudent to follow the science. And to Dr. Gellman, that means that she strongly urges a holiday pause in our in-schools operating in-person. She gave us kind of two different models to consider. One would be to close intermittently after the holidays, after Thanksgiving and after New Year's. And the other one would be to close at Thanksgiving and then not reopen until after Martin Luther King Day in January. She called that one the college model. She recommends that districts begin now to make well-informed and properly organized responses to the coming wave of positive cases. They also hinted that Cuomo may act in the next few weeks regarding regional or statewide closing. Cuomo today in his public call did not really allude to that, he's still identifying the microclusters, but I think behind the scenes, there's some talk of regional and statewide closures due to the numbers. The districts are varied in their responses to the recommendations in terms of the length of a closure and the type of pause adopted. A lot of this is based on the size of the districts, the rates in their area. There are several areas in Orange County that are going to be identified as either yellow or orange or possibly even red zones within the next day or so. We've been giving that heads up. And it also depends on their instructional model, students in school five days versus students that are in school every other day. So. So, with all of that in mind, I just want to talk a little bit about Greenwood Lake specifically. Greenwood Lake, as you know, we've been open for in-person instruction five days a week to anyone that wanted to come in since the beginning of school. We've only closed our district for one day in all of this. Our cohorting system is working. When we have had a case, we've been able to isolate that case, send those students home, those faculty members home, and the rest have been able to stay open for the most part. And we have not seen spread. And it's not only us that's not seeing spread, that Dr. Gellman very clearly said that the transmission is not happening in schools. So, we're happy with that and thrilled with that, and we want that news out there. What we are doing in schools and what we have in place is working. So, I have a goal, and I've talked with administrators and I've talked with teachers, I've talked with the GLTA union presidents. We want to preserve as much in-person instruction as possible, but also while adhering to the science and realizing that, you know, a pause may be needed to some extent. So, that said, I've looked at the calendar and making the following suggestions in terms of remote instruction and changes to remote instruction for certain days. And I've included the calendar here on the right-hand side so that you can see the corresponding days of the week that go with these dates. So, I would look to change November 25th, which is the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, to a remote half-day of instruction. For November 30th to December 7th, move to our e-learning remote instruction program. And then return to in-person instruction on Tuesday, December 8th. That would give us 12 full days after Thanksgiving days. Most people after exposure to COVID show symptoms between days seven and 10 at the latest. 14 days is the, is the kind of the buffer zone that's been implemented, so we believe 12 days would give us that little bit of a buffer. Our school buildings would be open during those days so that staff could come in or work remotely, but the buildings would be closed to students. And then similarly, with winter break... And then similarly with winter break, and again, you'll see the calendar on the right-hand side for winter break. Changing December 3rd to a remote half-day of instruction. January 4th through the 11th, making that e-learning remote instruction period. And then returning to in-person instruction on Tuesday, January 12th. That would give us 12 days after New Year's Eve, which is when we expect a lot of social gatherings to happen. And again, the school buildings would be open and staff could choose to come in or work remotely. But the buildings would be closed to students. And so I just want to kind of hear from the board about those thoughts, questions that you have that you'd like answered. That I can answer for you or Julie may be able to answer for you. As I make decisions about moving forward, but I want to do so with the board input.
I just want to start by letting everybody know that Julie is Julie Shaw. She's one of our school attorneys. In case anybody that's joined the call doesn't know who she is. And then open it up the rest to the, to board members for questions. Comments? Anybody want to jump in there?
I think Sarah, you've done a pretty thorough, pretty thorough plan here. I mean, you jumped on this. You really did advocate for everybody. I think it's, everything you've done is excellent. And I think this plan should work out well.
Okay. Aaron?
Sarah, what are other districts doing? I mean, what was the reaction to?
So I can't share exactly what other districts are deciding, but the, there are the different models that are currently being explored are approximately one week after closure. I mean, after one week closing, two weeks, doing a full two-week closure after each of the upcoming breaks. And then there are, there is consideration being given to being closed completely from Thanksgiving through to Martin Luther King holiday. And I think what you'll ultimately find, there are going to be districts that do any combination of those.
I can confirm that, that the various districts in the county are all looking at different configurations and all of them are in play. None of them.
Everybody, everybody is doing something in terms of, they're just not, no one's, like, is anyone talking about just reopening after the break as usual?
Um. I wouldn't say that is off the table. Um.
Yeah, I can't speak for all of them either. I just know.
Yeah, I, I, I'd say that's completely off the table.
I'm sure we could be safe to say there's one district that would not close in Orange County. Just as a hunch. But after that, you can't say.
And is there any? So it's just, I mean, right now it's just a recommendation, right? There's no like, I don't know what the right word is.
Band-aid.
Threat against not, not closing?
Correct. So she is, Dr. Gellman is planning on releasing and I haven't had a chance to watch Steve Noe House's video this evening, but it may be on there as well. But what's, what we're going to be receiving in writing is that they strongly urge us to take a holiday pause for a period of time after the holidays. I don't know if it's going to say exactly two weeks, a minimum of two weeks, 14 days. I don't think there's going to be specific dates in there or anything. But I, from what I understand, it's going to say, strongly urge districts to take a holiday pause after the upcoming holidays. But they, according to Mr. Newhouse and Dr. Gellman, they cannot make executive orders to close schools anymore. That Doc, that Cuomo has made it very clear that he will not allow that to happen and that he is the only one that can do that. And I, I will tell you that legal counsel doesn't necessarily agree with that. But, but we will not, we will not getting an executive order ordering us to close. Unless it comes from Cuomo at a later point.
Okay, thanks. I'll let everyone else chime in.
Anybody else who want to jump in? Okay, thanks Michelle. I couldn't hear. I know, I couldn't see everybody. She shared the screen. Thank you.
Um, my concern is closing and then Cuomo issues us to close. Now we're clear for a long period of time. I mean, I personally would like to keep the school open, keep it functioning as normal as possible. I think the kids just need consistency and it, you know, we should be offering that to them as much as possible.
Can I say something? Okay. I don't think based on what Cuomo said today that he would be inclined to force the schools to close unless there was a positivity rate of 9% or greater. That number that he announced as the rate that would have to be reached over like a seven-day rolling average after opening happened. It was 5%. And then 9% to close once opened based on the regions. That was his original framework that he articulated. And he did make reference to that today briefly when he updated everybody about the removal of the yellow microcluster area in city without stating anything about the future designation of those other cluster areas in the next, what, 48 hours? So. But so it's unlikely that there will be an order to close on top of any decision that may be made locally to close unless the numbers truly spike through a level.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think our infection rate is pretty low, you know, amongst the school. I think that it also gives us, like the oversee, I don't know, I can't think of the word. But we, you know, now we know what the children are doing. We know that they're following protocols when they're in the school. When they're not in the school, we don't, we can't monitor that. And I think that is a, you know, that can contribute to the increases as well.
Okay, thanks Michelle. Um, can Sarah or Julie, is there any, um, is there any? Since there's no order, is there any ramifications to not closing if that's what they're strongly suggesting?
Um, so legally, obviously I don't have credentials to say whether it's good or not to open or close. Sarah has excellent credentials, but her doctorate is the wrong kind to make medical decisions. I would say a strong recommendation from a commissioner of health regarding a virus that has killed lots and lots of people is probably a prudent way to go to try to preserve the community and to keep the rate low enough to not have to close for a longer period of time later. It's hard to not listen to the advice that's strongly issued by those medical experts that are responsible for maintaining health and welfare on a larger scale as well as your own school district physician.
Thanks Julie. Um, Matt, Yuquan, somebody want to jump in? Matt?
I'll go first. I would say we don't close unless we're mandatory, you know, we're mandated to close if an orange cluster, which apparently is imminent coming from what they're saying, then we close. I think we're kind of prepared for this. Like to me, do we, did we even have a Halloween surge around here?
At the, at the high school level, we did. But in our district, no. But our, our high school students, yes.
I mean, if it does happen, I think this is a great plan. But unless we're, you know, mandated to do it, I don't see doing it.
Yuquan?
I agree with Matt. So just to be, just to clarify. This is, this is, this is because, this is not because of transmission in schools. So Sarah, you're concerned about, this is, this is, this is the holidays where families will come and join you in your house, join them in their houses. And this is, this is sort of a.
That's Dr. Gellman's concern, correct.
This is her concern. This is just in case. Okay. But, but I think that you have everything, all the precautionary measures in place. And I think you guys have been doing great. You know, awesome. It's, it's just, you know, I mean, if she mandates it, not she, if Cuomo mandates it, that's one thing. But so one example. She she wants us to close from November 30th to December 7th. It's about a week, right? So easily two weeks for somebody to be considered.
So the two-week plan, Yuquan, actually goes all the way through December 11th and schools reopen on the 14th. My proposed plan is actually shorter than a two-week.
Okay. So she wants it longer.
Dr. Gellman is recommending two weeks, 14 days.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I think you guys, everything is working. We're keeping the numbers low. I mean, you know, we're not just sitting and watching. I mean, you're actually being very proactive. You know, unless, unless the cases spike, yeah, we keep an eye on it. Everybody's orange. Everybody's red, I mean, red and orange. But you know, we keep a close eye on it and then we move on like that. That's, you know, that's what I want. I want, like Michelle said and Matt said, I want, I want the kids to feel that their, their schedule is normal, almost as normal as before.
Um. Everybody, what do we have? Barbara left?
Yeah, so I think it's a great plan actually. And I think it's all working. I, I think school's going really well. In-person is actually amazing and I'm so happy and grateful and you know, we know it's so important for the kids to be in person because it's so important for many reasons. Not only do they thrive academically, but there are, again, a whole, a whole boatload of other reasons. And yes, we know that nothing is actually stemming from being in school, meaning there are not. The cases that we're seeing are, are not from the kids being in school. It's from what's going on outside of school. And not only do we have to consider the children, because that's always, of course, number one, always, right? I hope that everybody can agree with me on that one. Always, always, always. The kids are always the priority. We have two buildings full of children and adults that we have to consider and think about. So I I really think that this is a great plan and I think that we should go ahead with it.
Okay. Thanks Barbara. TJ, up at the top. Go ahead.
I would personally consider the quarantine for Thanksgiving, considering Thanksgiving is the number one gathered holiday of the year. Especially in all the bars and everything that is, Thanksgiving is the number one biggest holiday of gathering. So I would say yes personally for Thanksgiving, but for the Christmas one, I wouldn't, I wouldn't extend it that long. Since Christmas is normally just your general people that you're with normally throughout the year. It's not where Thanksgiving, where you're having extended family coming from all over the place.
I, I, yeah, and TJ, just for you, it's not just Christmas. It's also the New Year's holiday where people tend to have parties. And so just absolutely, I just want you to consider that, make sure you have considered the New Year's date as well. But I've made note.
When do the kids normally go back after New Year's?
January 4th.
Yeah, I definitely, Thanksgiving is always a huge holiday where people come from all over. I know that's the busiest time of year for all our restaurants and bars here in town. Especially in the police world, it's the busiest time of year. But Christmas and New Year's, I feel like isn't as big of a Thanksgiving, people haven't been around their family all year. You know, and people are finally having enough and they're going to want to go and they're going to want to see their family and everything. I think Christmas and New Year's isn't as serious as the gatherings will be for Thanksgiving. Personally.
Um. Okay. I am more inclined to go with the shorter quarantine after Thanksgiving as more of a trial and error. See what works, what doesn't. Does this next wave that they've, they've talked about, like it, it's, it's increasing. But my children are remote, so that's my, personally, it doesn't affect me. I don't know how many people are traveling. I really don't. But I, I want to be clear. I know I heard Julie's recommendation. I want to hear Sarah's actual recommendation of what she thinks should happen. Because I defer to, to the expert here on this one of what, what would be good for the school and the teachers and staff and, and students. Being in school for more days is always a positive. I'm not taking that away. I just want to get her opinion.
Um, did you want to get, Aaron had an opportunity to ask questions, but he didn't get an opportunity to share.
Oh, okay. Sorry, Aaron.
If, wanted to do that first?
Uh, yeah, I, I don't want to quarantine unless we're forced to. I don't, I don't see the benefit of doing that. I don't, anybody can be sick at any time. The holidays, everyone's got to be, it's supposed to be being careful regardless of what's going on. So I want the kids in school as much as possible.
Okay. Thanks Sarah. Sarah?
So I, I'm going to tell you that we aren't seeing transmission within the school building. We're not. That said, I do think that there is going to be a lot of spread after the holidays. I do think that both the winter holiday, winter break holidays, Christmas, Hanukkah and New Year's, as well as Thanksgiving are places where people gather in groups and won't necessarily be social distancing. And I also believe that it would be prudent to take a pause to for a length of period of time after the breaks to make sure that they don't come back and spread it. And then we have wildfire in our buildings. Because if that happens, we would be closing for months, not for just a week or a week and a half. So it is my opinion that we move forward with what I suggested tonight. That would be 12 days. I think that would be enough to know the positives and see the rates locally to see what's happening in terms of positivity in our students and in the families. We would know by then who needed to be quarantined because of positive cases. And then we could hopefully resume safely. I don't think if we need, I don't think we need two full weeks from the first day that we were set to return. And that's kind of what's been implemented. I think it's two weeks up, you know, 10 days to two weeks from the holiday. I think that's the day that people gather. And to me, that's New Year's Eve, Thanksgiving. And those are the two real dates that we need to consider. And I think that my 12-day window gives us the opportunity to find out what, what, what cases are going to exist, get them quarantined. They will not return to school. And then everyone else can return. So my recommendation would be to do the one week and one day after each. For, for the safety of our staff and of our students.
Thanks Sarah. And that shorter quarantine, I'm just looking at, at the calendar. And that shorter quarantine, I'm just looking at, at the calendar, just so everybody's clear, would have us return on December 8th, if that was the way to go?
So let me.
Is that the, I, I don't know. I'm just looking to see how many school days it actually is. I, I just, I wanna know before I.
Yep. So, um, if you're, can you see, oh, no, I just presented. I didn't actually share my screen. Share screen. Sure. So looking at. This one. For November, it would be, the 25th would be remote. Then the first sec, I'm sorry, the 30th, this full week. And then the Monday. And the reason we added the Monday in is because we already have a three-hour delay that day. So it's just kind, it's tacking on just kind of one more day into that period to get us to 12. Um, and then we would resume full-person instruction on the 8th. So it would be five, six days of remote plus the Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
Okay.
When were they supposed to return?
November 30th.
Supposed to return the 30th. All right, I, I happen to go, I'm just gonna give my opinion on, um. I'm more concerned that if, if there is COVID cases and spreading, that we can't, um, properly staff the school. And that leads to us closing for a different reason than that extra, than, than a week. Having, that, that, that's my concern. It's more of being able to staff the school to stay open for the rest of December. Uh, that, that, we, we've already had, you know, we're, we're looking for substitutes. We're always, you know, it seems to be a pretty real thing. But that's my opinion. Um, um, I'd rather give up a week than lose three more, or however many days it is. But that's, that's just my opinion. Anybody have anything else to say?
Uh, that makes sense to me.
Okay, so if I'm hearing correctly, Aaron wants to stay open, Yuquan, Matt, and Michelle want to stay open. And I guess the other three of us are more leaning towards Sarah's recommendation.
Julie, um, it, so I just want, a, a couple of things here. One, this is not actually up for, we're, we're taking, um, the advisement of board members and getting feedback. But this is not an actual board agenda item where there's a vote. So ultimately, Julie, it correct that, and, and I'm not saying you were saying that, Sue. I just, I, I just.
No, I know. I'm just trying to get recap and get an opinion, everybody's opinion. That's all. I just want to make sure I stated them correctly and that I understood. It's not a vote.
Um, and then the, the second half of that was, um, Julie, if you would. Do you have any legal summary or thoughts?
Um, it broke up after you said legal summary, or what was the rest of this question?
Thoughts.
Thoughts.
Oh, oh, thank you. Okay. So the only thing I think is something that pragmatically should be considered is. The trajectory in all the different counties is on a parabolic upswing. And within the next week or so, I think you're gonna see a significant uptick even before you see the Thanksgiving uptick based on the scientific data. And then second, I think it's important to note that if you do become a red or orange zone, which you become pretty quickly often after a yellow zone. You are forced to close school at a, a minimum for four consecutive school days, assuming that the fifth day, people can return to school only. Conditioned upon every single person that returns being COVID-negative. And then a continual testing requirement of 25% of your student and staff in-person population. Every week until you're out of the red. The yellow testing requirements are less burdensome. It's a bi-monthly thing or bi-weekly every other week. If you don't go below a state average. But if you get to the area of the red or the orange, you're gonna end up being closed a lot longer than what Sarah is delineating in this calendar. And I don't think that this does require board action from a legal perspective, because it's not a substantive change in the quote instructional calendar, designating days as instructional or non-instructional days that were otherwise, um, previously designated. So I think that it's a superintendent's decision to make based on board input from a legal perspective. And I think that her recommendation is based on what she genuinely feels to be in the best interest of the community and the public health of your community. As well as the welfare and safety of the students and staff in the school district buildings.
Thanks, Julie. Michelle, your hand is up.
Yeah, I just have a question, Sarah, since you're in communication with Dr. Gellman. Is there, cause I haven't seen this on any of the county websites. Is there a way for us to get any data on, um, what's the flu rate? And this is the season where everyone gets sick as, as opposed to COVID? How are they differentiating that?
Um, I have not seen any dashboard specific to the flu. Um, I paid, I do watch the county COVID rate dashboard every.
Yeah, I asked, um. The county executive. I didn't get a response. So I figured maybe since you're in communication with her, if maybe they have that information.
On, on the current flu rates?
On the current flu rates. And how are they differentiating the flu from the COVID is, is my question.
They have discrete reporting requirements at the state and local levels for flu separate and distinct from COVID-19. They did pass a regulation to, um, lengthen the timeframe for which the reporting of the flu is done into the database from just two or three hours per positive case to 24 hours. Because of the strain of reporting of COVID on the healthcare system. But that's how the numbers are reported and they're kept track of completely separately and up on the website for the state and stuff.
So the flu rate is up on there as well?
It's supposed to be. Um, I haven't checked it yet, because flu season like starts like now. I, I don't like to look at it before I know it's real, because then I have to actually care about it. So I'm, I'm living in denial for another, what, week or so?
Yeah, I was just curious, because I haven't seen any data on the flu rate, so.
Probably because it's still pretty low, so it's not yet newsworthy. That's my guess.
Thanks, Julie. Michelle, anything else?
Uh, no, that was it.
Does anybody have any other comments for Sarah? Questions for anybody? Okay, I, I'm just gonna say this is, um, I support Sarah's decision, whatever it is. I have more concerns not about, always loss of instructional time. I am, again, very concerned that if we start to have multiple quarantines, that we won't have enough staff. To cover the classrooms and, and, and different parts of the building. But this is, you know, it's just an opinion. Um, I'd rather give up a couple of days than, than a couple of weeks of that in-person face-to-face. And then if it was no different and there was no uptick, then we have an answer for, for after New Year's. That's my other part. I, I would view it as a trial, but, um, everybody's giving their opinions. Does anybody have anything else to say on any of the three different things Sarah said? Most importantly being whether or not the school district closes for a. Proactive quarantine. Anybody have anything to say? You wanna rat, go around, wrap it up? Anybody have, Matt?
Yeah, I just look at it like this, like the whole thing was about trust in the community. And the staff and everybody not going on vacation, you know, during the summer. And now just goes the holidays are coming. We just threw that trust out the window. With everybody. So now there's zero trust with anybody. And I think that's, uh, I think that's what the community's gonna go back and say. Personally.
I'm not, I don't underst- stand that. So you think that the community is going to say that we don't trust them because we think we should be proactive and close after a holiday?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments? All right. Maybe Dr. Gellman will be more clear. I, I'm not, I don't get, you know, we don't get to talk to her, only Sarah does, so maybe she'll point something out, um. In the next meeting or next day, or put something, whatever she puts in writing, that would be worded differently. Um, I don't know, but I guess that's. Sarah, do you have anything else to say?
No, um, well, yes. Two things. One, I, I just received a very lengthy email back from Dr. Gellman in response to the email I read to you a little while ago. And the, the, the end. Result is, no, she's not budging on the physician, physician letter. So, um, we knew, I kind of expected that to happen, so, um. We will move forward with looking to, uh, contract with a physician. So that's part one. Um, part two is, um. I, I, I hear all of you. I hear, I heard the, uh, tenor in Dr. Gellman's voice when speaking to us today. As well as speaking to other, um, people in the medical field and other superintendents today. And, and I also hear what you all are saying. And then I know, um, you know, that the board's kind of split. So. While I have not made a final decision yet, what I'm thinking about right now is maybe doing so. Going ahead and making a decision now about Thanksgiving, the week after Thanksgiving. And then waiting to see what happens and then making a call for after the winter holiday in mid-December. If I don't move forward with that and go ahead and do close and go remote, um, it would simp, it would really be till people can start planning. But what I think I might be able to do is in my letter about Thanksgiving to say it is a definite possibility that this could also happen after winter break. And to please start, you know, thinking about potential plans now. And then going ahead and heeding the advice of the professionals after Thanksgiving break. Going for that weekend one day and then kind of seeing what happens with the numbers. And if, uh. The numbers don't surge and we're not, where there's no big turn, then we can return after winter break like we normally would. But if there is a big surge after and they, and they see that, we can, um, change and make the decision to close after break. So, that's my. Thought about how I, I am going to move forward as of this moment, but I absolutely will take this back and reflect on it. Um, and I would love to get something out to the community, uh, by tomorrow evening, so that they can start planning.
Thanks, Sarah. Thank you for taking everybody's opinions into consideration. And I see, Michelle, is that your hand?
I just have one question. Would be, would this be the same as well for spring break as well, if we have spring break?
So we asked Dr. Gellman about that, because we are scheduled to have a break in February, spring break as well. And she said she was, would not comment about any of those or what her recommendations would be, because she doesn't know what is going to be happening with the numbers at that time. She doesn't know what's going to be happening with the vaccine at that time, um, and therefore cannot make recommendations to us. As of right now, she's doing it solely because of the. Four different major holiday, four to five major different holidays that are coming up and the social gathering that is associated with that. The fam- the familial and social gatherings associated with those holidays.
Anybody else have any questions, comments? Aaron, go ahead.
If we do decide, Sarah, if we do decide to go forward with the break, can we get a sense of attendance and stuff like that and how the remote? Goes because it's not the same thing. And if we're gonna, you know, because essentially it's turning into, it's a two-week break if the kids don't come, I'm saying. Or not fully engaged, you know, and then, and then winter break is even longer than that. So I just, a sense of what, what happens if we decide to go remote, what happens during that remote time and all that stuff?
I think that's a very fair question, um, and I think, um, a, a great suggestion, honestly. And I will do so, and I will be prepared with that information for the board meeting on December 14th, which is that following week.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything, comments, anything to say? I personally wanna say thank you to Sarah. I don't envy your position right now. It, it's a tough call. You're the one that's talking to everybody, not us. There's lots of strong opinions, so I, I wish you well in your decision. I don't think anybody wants to see kids not in school, ever. I, I don't, I don't think that's, that's it. So we'll just, you know, hope for the best and look for Sarah's decision. And that's it. I will say that thank you to Julie for joining us. Our next scheduled meeting is December 4th via Zoom. And if there's anything that has to change, there would be another, uh, special meeting scheduled. If there was something to change with, uh, Governor Cuomo's decisions of yellow, orange, and red, we would get that out to everybody. Can I have a motion to close the meeting?
Um, I just wanna share that Julie shared the chat for anyone interested, the flu map by county. And is it a, it is a flu dashboard similar to the COVID dashboard. Um, so Julie included that link in the chat box for everyone, so if anyone.
And I just checked the positivity rate in, uh, your county, and it's very low still, like well below 2%. And there were no weekly reported cases last week, and it's just starting to bubble in our area, like just starting to be positive cases. There's like 800 statewide so far in the entire season.
Thanks, Julie.
The transportation-wise. If we do this, are we gonna get any bus drivers back? If we start, you know, doing this?
So we're currently engaging in impact bargaining with the transportation unit. We had a meeting last week and we will have a meeting, uh, again this week, oh, actually tomorrow. I'm sorry, thank you, Julie. Where we will be working with the bus driving unit. So, and that, that is all I can comment upon right now, because I cannot publicly comment on discussions that occur during impact bargaining or that are currently being negotiated.
I think I can, um, speak for everybody. If there's bus drivers listening, that we would like them to, uh, you know, remain patient and, um. And know that we appreciate them and everything they do for us and, um, we would not wanna lose a single one of them. They're all. Special to us. A lot of them have been here for a long time, so. But it's, uh, all the, if, if, what I'm hearing is I think there's gonna be closures across the whole county of some kind, whether it's, um, seven to 14 days to six weeks, some of them. And I know with the orange. That the orange coming or possibly a red coming for, uh, Steve Newhouse said yesterday, it was New Windsor, Middletown, Newburgh, and possibly one more. Already that we're going to go to that orange level. That, that's what he announced yesterday. That would be coming by the end of the week. So we're gonna start to see a lot of schools closed, um, for different reasons. So those that proactively close, I, I, like I said, I'm pretty sure we're only gonna see one not proactively close. But that's just my hunch. Anybody have any closing statements? Otherwise, we're gonna go for a motion to close the meeting? Okay, uh, a motion to close the meeting at 6:43, please. TJ, second. Barbara, all in favor of closing the meeting? Aye. Opposed? Thank you, everybody. Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care, everyone.
Bye, everybody. Thank you.
Bye. Have a good night.